To the flag, the United States of America. To the government, to the nation, to the God, to the principle, liberty, justice, and for all.
Welcome to our meeting on July 15, 2004. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Any questions? No. All those in favor?
The first is a retirement. We're going to miss -- Ms. Bernice Rujo's put her retirement in. She's worked at Ranger School for a number of years. And she was always a smiling face and a pleasant person to talk to whenever you went into Ranger. So we will miss her as she goes into retirement. District computer tech specialist Greg Dino. Greg is going to a new position at Brown University. And the high school leave of absence is Stephanie Bukak. World language high school full time is Leslie Gonzalez. Fort Barton School contact teacher Beth Kilborn. And let me just go by three B. There are several people for our building committee. They are Jim Odell, James Aruda Sr., Jack McKinnon, Kelly Lovack, Joshua Caroa, Laurie Dias Mitchell, Sue Zimmick, and Gloria Christ.
Congratulations to all of them.
Thank you very much for the second call.
And we'll be getting together with that group within the next week or two to go over our facility study that was done earlier in the year.
And we will miss Greg, and we hope we can get him quickly for that.
Yep. His position has been advertised.
And then Bernice, maybe we could talk to her to come back like we did last week.
I don't think so. But we certainly could ask.
Okay, thank you. Any correspondence this year?
Just from Attorney Robinson. It's a court ruling for school committee versus the law of teachers' union. And it pertains to issue a job fair language in the law school department. And it could be precedent setting if the decision stands. Because it could impact the whole job fair language scenarios that have been mandated by the commissioner. But this challenges that to some degree.
Do I have any questions on that?
I got one.
Okay, so the next thing we'll go on to is the Project Lead the Way.
I'd like to move an item.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to move up item 6H, professional development science proposal. Second.
Diane, you want to?
All those in favor?
Thank you for making that adjustment to the adjutant. We're very happy to have Elaine Silva-Mangianti from Salve University here this evening. And she and I have been discussing a proposal which is a partnership between Salve and the Tiverton Elementary Schools to provide professional development in the area of engineering to help us achieve the next generation science standards. So I've asked Elaine to just give us a brief overview of what the proposal is, and we're seeking your approval to move ahead with the proposal. And Salve would then seek funding for this project. Elaine, do you have a mind coming up to the podium?
You're welcome, Elaine. Good to see you tonight.
Good to see you as well. Thank you so much. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
For inviting me here.
Yes. Thank you.
I'm honored to be able to do this. So let me just give you a quick overview of my own background, which you know my expertise. I've been a science teacher myself for 20 years, serving as a science specialist and a math curriculum coordinator. I've also been a professional development provider at Education Alliance with Brown University. And right now, I'm an assistant professor at Salve Regina University training pre-service teachers in math and science. So I would like to begin, even though I know you've had a chance to read through my one-page brief, I would like to begin explaining to you why I'm considering Tiverton. And then I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about the project. I've become aware that Tiverton is one of the leading districts in the state in terms of promoting the next generation of science standards. Diane Santa has been working very closely with various teachers, developing these science modules. And it's become very clear that Tiverton is a district that has embraced the next generation of science standards. So I met Diane at the STEAM summit that was held at Salve Regina. And from her enthusiasm, I realized that this might present an opportunity for Salve to partner with this district. And so this is why I'm here. So now let me give you a little bit of background about the next generation of science standards, which you're probably already aware of. But there's a new component. And that new component is engineering. And unfortunately, most teachers are not prepared, K through 12, to incorporate engineering into their science units. And another compounding factor is most districts throughout the state are using commercial science kits that do not have engineering components in them because they were designed before the new standards came out, just last summer in 2013. So the good news is that the Boston Museum of Science developed 20 units of engineering. It is called Engineering is Elementary, to coordinate with these commercial kits that many districts are using, including Tiverton. And so in speaking with Diane, and I know that this district has been working very closely with the data center to develop a new framework for science, and they've been examining these kits. But they're also examining, you know, how are they going to bring engineering into play in the classroom? So I proposed this idea to her. And we spoke for hours. We were very excited about this. And this is what I am proposing to you. I am a trained facilitator for Boston Museum of Science in Engineering is Elementary. I brought two different, and you can just pass these around if you're interested. Two different booklets of two of the kits. Children are introduced to an engineering problem through a story. And the story addresses a particular field of engineering. It could be civil engineering, it could be electrical engineering. And then they run about the problem through a story that could be set either here in the United States or globally. So we came up with the idea that all third grade teachers and all fourth grade teachers would receive training in two different kits. And I was really, I felt strongly that the teachers should decide what those kits would be. The teachers should decide where they would feel most comfortable. So already, the fourth grade teachers have determined which ones they thought would be best. And so I'm going to just share with you just briefly what they were thinking. One of them is called Landforms. It deals with geotechnical engineering. It's a story set in Nepal. This is a real situation in which the company called Ecosystems Limited had to deal with this situation. There's a flooded area during a rainy season, and the people cannot get to medical services across the river. And so in this Landforms unit, the students are testing soil to determine where would be best to build what is called this Tarple River Crossing Cable System. Fourth grade students would be going through different investigations of types of soils and determining a system that would work. The second one that they chose was Balance and Forces. It's a civil engineering unit, which goes along with their science unit of force and motion, in which children would be learning about and experimenting with different designs of bridges, including a beam type, arch type, and suspension bridge. So what I would be doing, if we were to secure funding, and Salve Regina is in the process of looking into funding, we have not gone any further because I felt strongly that I had to come here to present this to you first, asking for your blessings, so to speak, as to whether or not I can move forward. And so what I'm proposing is that in the spring of 2015, I would provide a one-day professional development training for all third grade teachers and a one-day professional development training for fourth grade teachers in the units that they've selected. During that semester, I would also provide intense support in the schools. So in other words, I would be meeting with each teacher once or twice throughout the semester, going through a pre-observation discussion, observing their classroom, and then having a post-observation conference, to really just be a support for them. A small group of teachers, and you'll understand a little bit more about this when I finish at the end, but a small group of teachers will also engage in, which I think I wrote in in that little description, learning more about strategies for promoting student scientific discourse and writing, which is going to be so important when the new science test comes out in 2016. Okay. Fall of 2015, same procedure, second unit. So I'd be providing them with professional development in the second unit and that support. In the spring, and this is the really exciting part, although the other part is as well, in the spring of 2016, we would have three half-day opportunities for teachers to join together to provide, to join in a professional learning community, in which they would analyze the challenges, the strong points of what we went through. We would be looking very closely at student work and developing recommendations, not only for the district, but also for the state, because all districts will ultimately have to adopt engineering into their science curriculum. It's just that Tiverton is really at the cutting edge. Tiverton's teachers are ready for it because of the work that Diane Santa has already done with the elementary teachers. Peter McLaren, who's the head of science at RIDE, is very interested in this. He's very interested in seeing what the results would be, not only for the state, but because Rhode Island is a lead in next generation science standards in the country. Various states around the country will also be looking at this information. So we're fortunate. Here in this area, we have a couple of industries that are dedicated to technology and engineering. We have Raytheon, we have KVH. Yeah, KVH. However, the person at Salve Regina, and I have to let you know that the Salve staff and the education department are very excited about the possibility if this were to come to fruition. However, we're a little bit frustrated having, trying to figure out who would be the right person to contact in industries such as that. And not just for funding, but also for in-kind support, let's say role modeling for engineering. And so I also wanted to throw out to you that if any of you have awareness of any individuals or corporations or companies that you think would be really interested in this type of project, we would love, we would really appreciate hearing from you. Because we're pursuing a number of avenues ourselves. Salve would, of course, be taking care of all of the funding through a grant that we're seeking. Tiverton would not have to have any financial responsibility for this at all. So are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
Will there be any other towns participating, or are you just going to start with Tiverton?
Just Tiverton.
So the grant would cover the kits and any kind of subs?
Substitutes, copying, yes. All. All aspects of this.
And what, just, what were you looking for for partners, I guess? So looking at a Raytheon, a Nuuek, a KVH. What were you looking for them to partner and do?
Well, in two ideas. It would be great for funding. But another idea would be because, you see, funders are really interested in community partnerships. And so if one of the corporations were interested in even providing in-kind support, you know, having an engineer come in that may be related to one of these engineering projects, and working with me, or working with the teachers, or working with the students?
Because I know district-wide, we have people that work at those. So that's the kind of thing, either in-kind or specific caches always.
Right. Right.
Diane, would you like to say anything about your collaboration?
Well, Dr. Elaine said we didn't get off into a little bit of a tangent, because it is exciting work to have a higher ed partner. And a lot of the grants that are out there are looking for districts to partner with higher ed institutions. So I think that our teachers would benefit. The teachers who have been on the writing team, the curriculum writing team for grades three and four, they've been aware of this idea. And as Elaine mentioned, the fourth grade curriculum writer looked at some of the modules and has made some recommendations. So we do have a lot of exciting work going on. And I think that this project would definitely take us to the next level with providing some effective professional development for teachers and the resources to help us get there. So I thank you very much, Elaine, for being here and sharing that with us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Walker, do you have any?
So you just need a motion from us to go ahead, Phil?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the PD science proposal presented by Superintendent Rarek.
Any other questions from anyone? That's here. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from the principals? No? They're chatting. Okay. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you. It's very exciting. And this lends itself very well. Is there anything else to move up? We're all set. Project Lead the Way, we just put this backup in here, because these are all the different things we've been going to and attending and all the partners we're looking for. And I didn't want you to be out on the street and have someone say, "What's Project Lead the Way?", and you wouldn't know what it was. So that's the only reason we put all that in there. I was out shopping, actually, in a consignment store, and someone came over to me and said, "Oh Sally, you have to do this new thing that's out there." My son did it at Derpy. It's called Project Lead the Way. I had never heard of it. And then we found out Middletown is starting it this September. So the administration has been meeting and talking with the teachers. And the good thing is, right in our program of studies, we see we already have the engineering courses. When we talk about STEAM at Tiverton High School, we're not just using a cliche. If anyone wants to visit downstairs and see what we have already there that we've held onto all these years, with the hands-on learning and the project-based learning with the art department right in there, and all of them working together, it's just amazing what we're doing. No one can believe it when we bring them here. Because a lot of places cut those programs out to do double math and double English. And when I go to the Rhode Island Association of School Committees to their meetings, and these districts are presented as being the model districts because they did that, and I sit there and go, "Oh, no. We're not going to do that in Tiverton because we have the multiple career pathways." Right, Mr. Rarek? You love that word, and we put that in the strategic plan.
That's correct. It's my favorite word.
I hate that word. But it really means a lot, because it means that every student that comes through that door has a legitimate pathway. And you remember, we had the big college fair every year. Then we had the Career Tech Day. And now we're going to try to combine those with, Linda will be coming up to talk about the different people we're meeting along the way. And as you spoke about partners and public-private, and it's really exciting. So Linda, would you like to just talk a little bit about what we've been doing? I want to share this with everyone.
The Project Lead the Way, was that part of that grant that we?
Yes.
Just to begin, though, you know what I mean? So we might, if we go forward?
No, I don't know what you mean.
If we go forward, we'll come back, is all I'm saying, if we extend it any further.
What you have in front of you is really a full-blown proposal if a district wanted to jump into Project Lead the Way. Those are many of the different courses that you could offer.
But we haven't done that.
And it's really down the line.
So the Perkins Grant?
The Perkins Grant is for training for this year for our teachers in Project Lead the Way, and also some computers, so to see what we can do. You know, if it pans out the way it seems like it is, I'm sure Steve and I will come back.
Come back.
You know, when we do our program of studies, to say, "We would like to now add this course, that course," based on, you know, what we've gathered from the training from this year from Project Lead the Way.
No, that's okay. So the first part of what you have is the Project Lead the Way overview, like Mr. Rarek just reviewed. We have not heard on Perkins funding yet. We're still waiting to hear. So it would start with that introduction to engineering course, and then would continue on with the specialization course, and maybe even a capstone pending where it would go and approval. The next thing you have is the Autodesk software certification piece, which is also embedded in Project Lead the Way. So that's something that our students would be eligible to sit for a certification. And part of the Autodesk software and Project Lead the Way are the computers that are necessary for 3D modeling and so forth. So that's what Mr. Rarek referred to when he talked about money in the Perkins funding for those computers. But we would also have to look to outside funding for additional funding.
And I'd just like to add, because Linda did have the foresight to seek the additional funding through Perkins. Perkins only funds these types of programs if it's unique to the area that your high school is in. And in other words, no one else offers it. And she was able to get our request in, really, at the deadline, before any other districts did. Middletown is doing it, but they're doing it through local funding.
In their budget.
So we're able to do the initial piece, you know, thankfully to Linda's foresight to, you know, through the grant if it comes through, which I believe all things, it looks like we will get it, but we still need our confirmation.
Knocking on wood. The next thing you have, some of the conversations that we've had with Mr. Frazette, Mr. McKinnon, Mr. Fenster, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Fernandez, has been around the specialization in computer-integrated manufacturing as a possible class, as well as digital electronics. So there is an option for a specialization class in computer-integrated manufacturing where students could earn a badge. So we're kind of looking, you know, out ahead as to what we can offer our students. Six C is an organization called Polaris MEP that we've been meeting with. Polaris MEP, which, Elaine, a tough act to follow. Polaris MEP is part of the URI Research Center. And what they do is, they do a lot of work with Rhode Island manufacturers throughout the state, whether it be robotics manufacturing, engineering composites, marine trades, whatever it may be. So there's a Ruth Gabelli over there that we've been talking to. And this is just a great resource about new technologies in the field, best practices used. We'll be invited to a conference to attend any of their workshops that they may have on, they're going to be having one we'll be going to in September on Lean, which is really a thought process with manufacturing and efficiencies. So just bringing all that information back to our instructors and the department. The next thing you have is the Rhode Island Manufacturers Association that we've been meeting with and working with Bill McCourt. We've also been trying to partner with some of their member associations within their association. So that might be a good lead-in to something that's happening on the elementary side. There's a group of manufacturers that have formed an organization called Make Rhode Island. And they do a lot of showcase work about their industry. And this goes beyond engineering. This also includes project management. They have IT, they have accounting, they have marketing, they have a legal department, so forth and so on. So we're looking at not just those engineering classes, but opportunities for all our students when we talk about career pathways. The next thing you have, the Rhode Island just adopted through the Manufacturers Association called Dream It, Do It Rhode Island. And really what that is, is a marketing campaign to bring awareness to the industry and the many different pathways and opportunities within it, as well as change the image of manufacturing, that it is high-tech, it is efficient, it is clean. You can make some great money, whether you're on the shop floor or you're one of their top engineers and project managers. We talk about Rhode Island Marine Trades a lot. And another part of the cog when we look in this is the Rhode Island Marine Trades Association because of the composites work within the industry, and it also fits nicely into the manufacturing side as well. So we've been working with Wendy Mackey over at Rhode Island Marine Trades Association and meeting with them. And she's also invited us to take part in any of their professional development, education showcases, the boat shows, those kinds of things. So we're continuing to work with them. Governors Workforce Board and the Department of Labor and Training, they've been doing a lot of work on career pathways, and not only for manufacturing. So we've been sitting in on some of those meetings just to learn about the industry itself. But we're also sitting in on the marine trades pathways that they're developing, as well as the defense industry pathways. They have an information technology pathway, a healthcare pathway. So it's really just learning about these different industries and the opportunities for our students and the education that's required. Something that you don't have, but it kind of spurred something when Elaine was up here speaking, we've also talked with the Rhode Island Department of Training. And the gentleman's name out there is Paul Sylvia. And he does some work in outreach to communities and schools as well. So it might fit nicely into the elementary engineering. They do civil engineering and transportation and roads and bridges. So that might be a good partner as well. But we'll talk to Elaine. Questions?
Are there any questions on that? No.
Well, it's, we've been to a lot of events, and we've spoke to a lot of people. Actually, we met Elaine at the STEAM summit planning committee that she sat on with myself. So it's kind of really wonderful to see her here and, you know, having an opportunity for our district. She's fabulous, so that's great.
And all these things are driven through the Newport County mentor co-op that we're a member of, that we've been a member of for all those years. Oh, hello.
And animal science is something? I'm starting to get a barrier.
The wise owl's coming to chat with us.
Thank you.
And if any of you would like to come to any of the things, you're totally welcome. Any of the meetings, of course, we'll let you know when they are, when we find out, to meet all these peoples. Because I think we have to step out of Tiverton and get, like we said, if you're not at the table, they'll eat you for lunch. So we're going to be at the table. Okay. Anybody else have anything on that? No? Linda, you're up again for the foundation.
I'm gonna, just for informational, I'm gonna recuse from this discussion because I am also a member of this board, but I will continue to take the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
The Tiverton Education Foundation has been very, you know, glad to receive the support of businesses within our community, as well as partners that we've met along the way. So we've been able to receive some grants and our donations recently. So we're bringing those items before you for your approval, awareness, acceptance, hopefully. So our first one is a $1,500 donation from Pirate Cove Marina to our boat building program, Mr. Phillips, for any kind of equipment, materials, career awareness activities, trips, whatever he may need for his students. Do you want to take these one at a time, or?
Do them all at once.
Do them all at once? Okay. The next one is a legislative grant for $2,000 from Representative Canario from District 71. We kind of had to turn this around really quickly. I think we heard about it about nine o'clock at night, and it had to get in the following day. So we talked quick to Mr. McKinnon and kind of some of the ideas that we had. And we really thought that bringing some form of technology and media within the school, and awareness to put televisions or a TV outside the bandroom door where our community members come in, as well as also install one in the cafeteria, we could, whether it be announcements, activities, photos, team sports, whatever the students wanted to put up in terms of any kind of clubs or events that they may be having. So we were awarded $2,000 to go forth and purchase the equipment needed, as well as hopefully have enough money to do a printer for photography as well, to be able to put that up in the schools. The third thing, Tiverton Power, once again, has come to the plate. They're now owned by Amera Energy. And we received a check for $12,100 for technology, and specifically LCD projections, LCD projectors, document cameras, computers for engineering. So that came in. And then in conversations with them, and we talked a little bit about what we're trying to do here with engineering and the cost of the computers for 3D modeling, we also talked to them a little bit about, there's a cyber patriot cybersecurity team that kids could be involved in. And we just kind of had a conversation back and forth. Tricia was kind enough to donate nine HP ProBook laptops that are just about two years old. So we received nine laptops, as well as nine docking stations, as a donation from them to be used as we see fit through that engineering and cyber patriot, if we were to build that route, if that was something that, you know, we wanted to do in the future.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the grants and monetary awards and the laptops.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much. High school handbook changes?
Yes, Mr. Frazette is submitting, I believe, one, two, three changes to our student handbook for the upcoming school year. And I think they're pretty self-explanatory. But I'll be answering any questions. And again, the alternative placement program, just to remind people at home, we used to have teachers monitor it. That's really, students are brought to the office and given a table and chair to do work at outside of Steve's office. So when you see So, when you see that, that's what, that's referencing. It's not an actual program.
Are there any questions on those?
On the, someone asked, so it's not a handbook change, it was just a FYI. When we have tardies, we don't just punish, we also have, our guidance follows up.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. And that's what I said, so I just wanted to say it publicly as well, that it's not just handbook says, well, shall.
No, no. No, there's follow-up on it, especially if, you know, if a student's tardy once or twice, that's not an issue.
Right.
But for the habitual offenders, there's conversations, as well as consequences. Conversations come before the consequences.
Mr. Eric, did we check those tardies that were wrong when kids come?
Yes.
Mr. Toriano? We did. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes if there's no more questions. Question? Second?
Any more questions? No? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. High school and middle school computers, Mr. Eric?
Yes, I'm asking the committee, as you recall, in our budget, we requested to replace all the teacher computers at the high school and the middle school, the ones that they have at their desks. And the motion was to look at laptops, refurbished laptops, and Mrs. Toriano did that. These prices are all off the bid list, the state bid lists. I'm recommending, after speaking with Al, that we go with the Dell. They're the cheapest, but they also come with a five-year warranty on the units, and by far, that's the best, the price, because I believe, Al, the 407s only have, what, a one year? Or a two year?
A three-year warranty.
Three-year, sorry.
The laptop, we wanna have something that's gonna last us a little longer after that. Once the warranty goes up after three years, we could have some complications, and it'd be quite expensive to repair.
And then, Al's also done an inventory of the teacher computers. He believes he can salvage with upgrades enough to replace one of the labs, either at the high school or the middle school. But that would probably only last a year or two, simply because the upgrades, they're sold, you know, we'll be able to push them for another year or so. But the rest are, that's pretty much a result of how old they are, and we really can't salvage any more than that. So, and again, it's under our budgeted item. We have budgeted $64,800. The cost is $57,750.
And so, after.
Could I have a motion? I have some questions.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the recommended bids for replacing laptops and desktop computers.
Do I have a second? Questions?
So, there was mention that the teachers, when they get the refurbished laptops, their desktops would go into a lab.
Just approximately about 24 of all of them.
The best of them.
The best would go into a lab.
Would go into a lab.
Right.
We're trying to make one.
Lab, but even that lab would only last for a year.
A year or two, that's correct.
So, in a year, we will be looking to purchase.
I'm gonna be coming, well, I'm gonna be coming back in August to ask to replace our existing computers that we have in our labs, 'cause we've got, I believe, three or four labs that really need to be upgraded. And that would, if we did that, if the committee was willing to do that, we would be prepared a year from now to do online testing, at least at the high school and the middle school, because we'd have enough units. And we have enough in our surplus where we could carry it, but I wanted to do it in two separate requests, since this was a budgeted request. The other would be unbudgeted, it'd be a new request for your consideration.
But, as we discussed before, I think, we, it's not just for online testing.
No, it's for.
Those labs are old.
That's right. Yes, yes, that's a good point. Yeah, it's also, they're being used all the time.
Yeah.
We're not purchasing just.
Right.
No, I agree.
Because we were really careful, the committee, as well as you both, that we weren't just buying computers that were gonna sit there for a year and will test for.
And that's why we wanted.
The legal labs would use.
And that's why.
So, I just wanna, I just wanna make that point.
Yeah, my, right, my thinking is, was based on those conversations.
Right.
Just to upgrade what we have.
Right.
No new, no additional computers, other than to upgrade what we have. That's correct.
Yes. So, is it fair to say that we're upgrading necessary upgrades?
Yes, and that's.
We're doing it in a fashion that we will be saving money when we go, when we bring a request in August, and maybe positioning ourselves to be able to do online.
If we want to.
Should that.
Yes, that's a bonus. Right, that's a bonus for us.
And we're gonna take all the old ones, take parts out, and we're gonna attempt, we think that we can get one, between the high school and middle school, if we get all the old ones together, we think we can get enough parts together, enough ramp, that we can make one more good lab to replace.
And then, we can just upgrade the remaining?
And then, that's, right, and that's the rest, so.
Okay.
It saves us, you know, we're doing what we can.
We're gonna try that, yeah.
Right. We're trying to do what we can.
Nothing much to lose, right?
Right.
No, we're gonna give our best shot, you know, that'd be help, I think, for you.
Any questions from anyone else? No? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, do you want to take the next one, the district-wide donation, the electronics?
Mr. Toriano has contacted me back, contacted the high school and the elementary, looked at my desk, and donated various pieces of equipment that are on the list before you this evening, and I met with Mr. Frazette, Mr. McKinnon, and subsequently with Mr. Frazette's absence, we're bringing it forward today so that we can get an acknowledgement for the acceptance of the equipment. We will use various pieces of the equipment here at the high school and potentially at the middle school. And Mr. Toriano has also indicated that he has additional equipment he'd like to bring forward at, you know, at future dates.
This is a resident?
Yes.
Oh.
And Al's gone through it, he feels it's worth, you know, that was another thing we've discussed previously, is when people donate things, we can use them, and it's just not donated.
Right, right. There are certain. Well, yeah, I mean keyboards, mouse, web keyboards. You wanna make sure that they're compatible and be useful. We don't wanna accept something that will not be used.
If nothing else, he said if it's something that we couldn't use in production, if we used, we could certainly bring it to the tech ed department, let the students take it apart, get some components, get some idea of how it works. So, he's very flexible with our usage of the donations.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, 'cause it's a donation.
I make a motion to accept the very generous donations of computer-related items from Mr. Toriano.
Any question? All those in favor? Thank you. That was very nice, very nice. Bid approvals, Mr. Eric?
Yes, as you recall, back in June, I asked the committee for approval to go out to bid for the gym lockers in the boys' locker room, the air conditioning, ductless air conditioning at Fort Barton, the rain garden fence at Fort Barton, as well as the push alarms for the doors at the middle school and high school. We received bids on two of the four items, actually, and I'll get to the fifth one in a minute. The bid for the gym lockers came in well under our budgeted amount, came in at $52,71. And the install for the air conditioning ducts also came in slightly under what we had projected for the cost. So, that's good news. We also have contacted Coastal Electric. They will do all the electrical work. They've given us a price, it's very fair, and as soon as the units are ordered and installed, they'll connect them, and we'll have them up and ready for the start of the school year, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Regarding the Fort Barton rain garden and the exit doors, I spoke to Attorney Robinson. He said that we can go into competitive bidding. We can go out now and seek prices for those two items, which, if that's okay with the committee, I will do. And the third, or the fifth item, is we did put out a bid for the replacement of the stairs leading to the lower fields, and I included some pictures for you. The first two are the existing, what we're talking about, 'cause I realize when we were talking about it, unless you've been out there, you don't really know the condition. And, well, we gave you a realistic.
You like to look.
Realistic view.
That's how it looks.
That's how it looks. And when we got the estimate from the company that's been working, that did the work for us on the septic, they're a construction company, they gave us a price for $8,500 originally, and that's to replace this small section here. What they did was, they submitted a bid at $1,805 to go beyond this picture of what we have. It would go from the top of the hill all the way down, and that's what you see here, the new cement with a metal rail.
That's nice.
Their recommendation was, this would be better serve our people, 'cause you wouldn't have to walk on any of the grass. This would take people right down to the lower field, and I said I'd bring it to the committee for conversation purposes.
So, it's like the extra four steps, sort of?
It's a little longer downward, but also upward, and you get the metal rail, so you can walk coming up and going down at the same time. The way they have it here, you can't really tell, but it's a two-way walkway.
Yep. No, you can see it's in the middle.
So, if I could get approval, at least for the first two bids, to award them on the air conditioning.
Mr. Eric, would you pick out the wine red for the lock?
I was thinking of going with a bright red, Mrs. Black, but wine red is fine.
Is there a bright red?
No, I'm just kidding. We're going.
Our school colors.
No, we will be going with the wine color.
Okay. Is that all right with everyone?
So, the, what do you need, Bill, for one and two?
I would like you to award, I would, motion on the first two.
Make a motion to approve the awards for the bids on the 21 gym lockers and the ductless air conditioning for the library at Fort Barton.
Any questions from anyone? No? All those in favor?
Now, I would like, I would like, is it, I don't think I need a motion, but I'm just gonna begin competitive bids on the other two.
So, the difference between what we did before is, we advertised a bid, no one comes in, and now we can actually call people and say, hey, what's your bid?
Yes, that's correct.
Not only one person.
Because we did contact the people that gave us the estimate.
Yeah.
In all these cases, and only two of the four sent them back.
Okay.
You know, we said, you gave us the estimate, and, you know, so we'll go back to them again.
So, per policy, you just have to do a blanket advertising first, and whoever sees it can bid.
To protect.
But, to protect.
To meet the bid laws, right, the competitive bidding.
Well, to be competitive and be competitive. But now that we didn't get anything, we're free to go ahead and start calling vendors.
Okay.
Okay.
What, would the committee like me to go into competitive bidding on the stairwell as well? Because it didn't come in at our bid price. It was well over.
Right, and it's not what we asked for.
It's not what we asked for.
So, if, our people might have bid if we had described it as a larger project.
That was the only, that was the only bid.
They were the only person that returned the bid.
We said we bought a four, and they came back and said.
Yeah, let's, let's re.
So, you just catalog it for.
Well, what I can do is call them back and say, just give us what you priced us at at the beginning. In other words, the $8,500, which would just be that section where you see that that's all beaten up.
Oh, yeah.
And just replace that. That was what the $8,500 was for.
Well, I like the new idea, but it seems like we need to rebid.
I think, I think, oh, I think we can get, if you would like me, I can rebid the longer version, if you want. I'll rebid it if you'd like.
Do you think that's the better way to go?
If that's what we need, then we should.
I think it would be better.
I think it is.
In the long run, safer.
'Cause it's kind of rough up there.
To bid the whole, to bid the distance and the width.
My mother used to have a hard time.
It won't take anything to bid it, it's just a matter of putting in the specs.
So, we'll see if we're gonna change the nature of the project.
Yes, right. So, that's no problem. So, we'll do that.
And we may benefit by having the original bidder come in with a lower price.
Now that, now that we're gonna have.
Speculating if it'll be competitive.
Right, now that, right.
Competition.
Enough to pay for the add, at least, totally.
Sort of the conspiracy theories to me thinks this is sort of a bait and a switch by coming back with something else.
Right. Yeah, so we're, and I told them, I said, probably wasn't gonna fly, but I'd, you know, bring it to the committee.
Yep.
And they've been very good with us, the company, so I'm sure they'll give us a competitive bid on the longer version.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Traffic patterns at the middle school?
Yes, I'm just seeking permission. You can see from, it was from Mr. Ferrish, but I've spoken to Mrs. Mitchell about it on several occasions this year, about trying to enforce a traffic pattern there, and she's just, I'm just seeking permission to go to Chief Blakely to meet with him.
That's a good idea.
To come up with, talk to him, say, what can we do to make it safer?
A few other people have mentioned.
Yeah, so, if that's okay with the, I don't even think I need a vote, it's just that I'll be doing that.
It's just sort of an FYI, going to chief.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we've done the science proposal.
Is there a fund balance, Mr. Ferrish?
Thank you, Mrs. Black. I've summarized the capital items that the committee had gone through the budget process with totaling $239,655, and I included it here because I'm asking the committee to reserve these funds, similar to what we've done in the past as part of our fund balance, to reserve it for purposes of capital expenditure. If you recall, last year, we did that with our wastewater treatment project, so I'm looking for a light motion this year for these items, so we would have on our financial statements a reserve fund for capital balances of $239,655.
Where's the?
It's six I is the summary.
No, I see that. Where's the stairs?
Oh, I think it's.
Just making sure everything's on there.
On your list. The damaged steps, it's up under high school.
That's what I'm looking for.
It says $8,500.
Yep. I'm just making sure everything we just looked at is on there.
The tricky one would have been the computers, 'cause you have to.
There is one, there's one item that we haven't bid yet, and I'm waiting until the maintenance director position is resolved.
Yeah.
It's, 'cause I believe we can do a lot of that work in-house.
Oh, good.
So, that was a bid from a company to do it all, you know, outside company to do it. So, I wanna, I don't wanna give, come to the committee first. I wanna straighten that out first before I come to the committee, so.
So, the total of the computers was, though, was the bid that we were looking at?
Yeah, if you look at the high school and middle school computers, that's the total that was budgeted.
Okay. Okay. So, this is at the budgeted, not necessarily the bid?
Correct.
Right.
And it's only the items that we went through the budget process.
And so far.
That's what the budget committee.
And so far, we've been underbid, under our projections, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to that we, the school committee, reserve the fund balance for capital purchases as listed on six I.
Second? Any questions? No? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Request for temporary personnel?
Yeah, the last, this item came up with Mr. Gordino leaving to take another position. It's really left Al shorthanded. It's just him right now, and I would like permission from the committee to find somebody to help over the remaining weeks of the summer to get the computers up and running.
So, through the end of August?
Yeah, through the end of August.
Well, and you can always come back if you need it.
I'm just vague, you know, it's a bridge between when a new person takes the position.
So, will you advertise on school spring?
It's been advertised.
For a six-week or eight-week, no, a temporary position?
I'll advertise, but I'm gonna, the person who helped us before hopefully will apply as, because they work very well.
Yeah. Okay, and so, for, it will, will you?
We'll, we have to advertise it.
Right, and it will be then listed as an eight-week position?
Be temporary, temporary.
Just temporary.
Temporary until, we'll put a date, August 31st, or whatever the end of August.
Right, extend.
Right, and if we need to extend it, I'll come back to the committee.